Take your device, you can't. Okay, well. Let's hope that's gonna fly.
It's on a picture. I don't know.
Yes.
I don't know.
What?
It's on my computer. You know how they just. Automatically different landscape and all that, yeah. Yeah, I have some in the afternoon. Are we gonna get a message from this? They've had a statement of the whole thing. Yeah. I'm gonna get this early going to the. Managers' report. And he's here. Pretty good. The corner. So, do you know Rich? Who was there forever?
Do I know Rich?
Yeah.
Uh, well, he's in charge, I know. His daughter works at the pizza joint, is everybody else on it?
He, he lives here. He's been here for 900 years.
Yeah, he actually, um. Brought together my section, what classes I'm in, he made that whole section up.
Yeah. I can't go too far.
I drive that far.
How long does it take you?
Okay, so.
About an hour.
Power went off.
Uh, what time, how many minutes a week do you go?
Five.
Now, just. What time?
Uh, so I have a rule, I leave, I leave at 10:30 to get there at 11:30 because I have to be early. I have classes from 12 to 4.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that's not horrible.
Sorry. Well, it's temporary.
How, how long is it, two years?
Yeah, probably two years. We're doing two different, uh, programs.
It's all. Well. Okay. Let me know when it's recording.
Paul Rowland.
Perfect. Okay. It is. November 25th, 2025, at 1700. We're having the ACCWIP regular board meeting at the new office on, um. Black Canyon Highway, Suite 4. Meeting notices were posted at the library, on the website, and, um, in the. On the bulletin board outside the office. First thing on the agenda while we did call to order, so, um, we'll call the board members. I'm Elaine Clayton, Board Chair.
Melina Reddick, President.
Tom Stridat, Board Secretary.
Irene Brooks, Vice Chair.
Sean Collins, Member of the Board.
And guests?
Jerry Postima, General Manager.
John Roscoe, Field Superintendent.
Derek Scott, Operator.
Cindy Miranda, or the user. Not owner, just user.
Devin White, Legal Counsel.
Okay, perfect, um. How can I do it? This is problem one, because I had minutes on one of the agendas.
I had minutes on mine.
Okay, can I see you for just a second? Okay, so, um, approval of minutes. Has everyone had time to look at the 10:28 regular meeting, 10:28 executive meeting, and 11:05 special budget meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve, um, all of these meeting minutes.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Did you make it to approve all the meeting minutes?
Yep.
Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, approved unanimously, so all of the noted meeting minutes have been approved and will be posted.
Was she gonna do, like, discussion? Is that part of the?
It's optional, you can use some discussion, yeah.
If it's optional, she says, like, you know, edit certain after the second.
Typically, yeah, so it's motion, second, any discussion.
Discussion. Move.
Okay, so, this is really off topic. I'll make sure to ask for questions, but let's get back on track. We've got a lot to cover in this meeting, and we don't have time for a lot of.
This session, I just wanted to say you did a great job on the minutes.
Tom, excuse me, Robert's rules. Again, we need to say.
Okay, that's just two seconds.
Well, let her know after the meeting. So, um, Chair's report, activities for, uh, the last month, update on the move to the new office. Theo was here today and started some of the work. I think we'll be back within two weeks to, um, start some of the additional work. And I really have to thank, um, Irene and, um, John for all of the work he put into getting this arranged and for coming to meet Theo. Sometimes things take longer than we expect, and that's just how, how it works. But progress is being, um, made, and that's what counts. Rental option for the adjoining space, there's a vacant suite right here, um, about 250 square feet. That would be idea for, um, having board meetings and other meetings. Much of the board was opposed, not much, but a couple of the board were opposed to putting up a wall, and it cost about, of about $8,000. Well, I have to meet with, um, Lori to see what kind of arrangements we could make to obtain this room next door and, um, what the rent would be. Update on the budget. The budget was posted at the office, at the library, and on the website. Devin has sent the budget to be printed and, um, placed in what press it carrier?
Yeah, so the, the notice of hearing was published in the Daily Courier first on last Sunday, second time will be this upcoming Sunday, and it includes a summary of the budget, not the full budget.
Correct.
The full budget is available upon request at the three locations.
Correct. And I did leave copies at the library, and the event, uh, somebody came in and wanted a copy from them. So the meeting for the budget will be on December, remind me?
17th at 5:00 PM.
At 5:00 PM here, and then following that will be the regular meeting, so please make sure you mark your calendar for that time. I hope that'll work for you. Okay. General Managers' Report, Jerry Postima.
Thank you.
So basically, I just wanna start with an update on the, uh, operation transition. We're going through, right now, the, uh, agreement has been turned over to the attorney for review. But this would be an opportunity to introduce the two fantastic guys that have already started working here. Um, we have Derek Scott, and he's owner of Arizona Operations Utility Operations. And then we have JP Roscoe, we call him JP, otherwise known as John. And he's our Field Superintendent. And I believe the reason it's, uh, JP is because there's about John Jr., Gen 1, 2, 3, 4, isn't there?
Maybe none of my family's a John.
So don't feel uncomfortable calling him JP.
Right, JP sounds good.
He's, he's been answering that for most of his life.
JP and Derek. We're here to help. Just so you know.
So Derek has got all of his grade threes, and he's got several, uh, systems that he operates, both in water and wastewater. And he's got over 30 years' experience. JP has been working in the water and sewer industry, and pipeline industry, and, uh, heavy trucking and everything else for 10 years. Um, he has worked in Mayor, in Yarnell, I know you were down in Yuma constructing a wastewater plant. Um, were you in Prescott, too?
It's been a lot of line repairs for me.
Have them, I'm here for him, we're doing up in, um. Deer Creek, we did all, bunch of laterals in Deer Creek, a lot of stuff over in the Tonneau Basin area, and some stuff up in SoCal. We've been all over the state.
Yeah, so a lot of great experience, um, knowledge, and just really good at, at doing major operations.
So we do have under new business, um, because we are going to have an executive meeting, um, and people may not want to stay in and come back for, for that. We do have discussion and possible action regarding the General Managers' Reports. So if anybody has any, um, questions they would like to ask the, the new team, that would be, this would be an appropriate time, although we will have to limit it so we can stay on our, our schedule.
Can I do something?
Oh, I'm sorry, you can.
Thank you, Manager.
I just tried to hurry up so they could go.
They can go and stay as long as they want.
We're here for a long time.
Um, so some of the updates to give everybody an operational change. The last day for wet will be the 30th. Um, they will turn everything over on December 1st. They have multiple forms that they need to fill out. They will be turning in everything to us, us being myself and one of the operators. We'll be here on Monday. They must have everything to us by 3:30 on Monday, or they don't get paid their final check. Um, the other thing is, they have to transition over all the various electronic stuff. So we, we know they have a lot of information on their computer. What we agreed upon is that they're gonna share a Dropbox with us, and as things come up, they will continue to put things in the Dropbox. We'll have access to the Dropbox, we'll be able to download everything, and then make sure that we have all the information we need. Excuse me, or are required to have, and we can continue to ask questions in between. Um, there's gonna be a two-week period until December 15th, where they will have supervised access to remove any of the equipment that they own. Because they didn't feel it was really gonna be good to do the operations and move out at the same time, which I agree. And so they're gonna come back, get equipment through the 15th. We will supervise them, um, we will change all the locks, we will change any codes, we'll change any passwords, anything that they may have banned access to. Amy. So anyways, along with that, we're going to be doing some immediate changes to the operations, because it's needed. Is everything okay?
Yeah, we're all good. Yeah, just making sure, you know, just to.
So there will be some immediate changes, and, um, we will interface with Julie, so we'll be spending time with her in the office. Um, and then there's just gonna be stuff that we have to do to, to kind of close out projects that wet was working on. The media did get changed out, our SNCC media did get changed out, so that was completed, uh, was not completed as we had approached it, but it got completed. It's now operating. In December, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Derek, but in December, we will change over the low-pressure area to that service line up on Wyatt.
My expedite has got scheduled for the first week of December.
Okay. So the house up on Wyatt, which was tapped into the well line, not the distribution line. And they had the low pressure, they, they remember they were here for the low-pressure issue? And they were tapped illegally into the well line, which unfortunately, the district tapped them in. I don't know why, but, um, so they had their own onsite booster pump and pressure tank, just to keep them at pressure that they could use. We did have somebody out here back in October to do the work, they got kicked off the job site by the previous operators, and now they're coming back to actually finish the job. Along with that, you may have heard or seen about the water tank overflowing up on Wyatt. That's because in order to keep pressure on that line from the well to the tank, they had to keep the well running all the time, even if there was no need for it, and even if the tank was full. So what they did is, they closed the valve partially, so that the pump went shut down, so it'd be just enough flow to create pressure and take care of those houses. We think there's gonna be more houses that are like that, otherwise you wouldn't have had the pump on for one, but we'll find out. Um, that's a waste of water, huge amount of electricity used, um, just, just a huge waste all the way around, and it created some obvious splitting in the area for an overflow. And has in the past. So even though the sensor part is a good idea, um, operating the system is even a better idea. And at that time, I'm filling my report. Do you have any?
No, you're good, I, I just wanted to make sure people can ask questions now.
Oh, yeah.
About that report, or ask, um, something of, of these guys as far as, you know, what are things that, uh, other things they see that, that need to be done.
Can I ask you a question or go after Wade?
No, go ahead, because, uh, oh, but call will be after the executive meeting, you may not want us to.
I just have one follow-up question, Jerry, about that, the well that they, you said the house was hooked up to the, not the, not the line, it was supposed to be the distribution line that was hooked up to the well directly. Is there any danger of contamination from the houses back to the wash, backflow?
Um, typically there is, but in this case, they had a backflow. So whoever installed the tank and the booster pump was smart enough, that was the plumber, was smart enough to put a backflow device in there.
And then there's some other houses up there hooked up the same, you said?
Well, we don't know, that's why I said we have to explore and see what else may be erroneously hooked up.
Okay, thank you. Was this too pretty mature? Yeah, I think it should be okay to talk about, um, the meters, the issues we're having with meters being meters on the wells.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Um, one of the things that we talked about as we did a, a complete site assessment is, we have, we're in violation of all kinds of ADQ and ADWR requirements. Number one being, the biggest one is that we have no meters on any wells, and we have to get an annual well and usage report. And so as long as the system's been in place, any report that's been given has been wrong, the report's been fabricated. So therefore, um, the first thing we need to do is get meters for all of these wells, and get them hooked up immediately, so we actually know how much water we're producing. The second thing is that we have to get out and check the, the meters, and especially the older meters that came back and the test that was done, where they're totally inaccurate. So we know that anything that's 10 years or older is gonna be super inaccurate, anything that senses, so it's a little bit newer, are probably gonna be okay for now, but they're definitely gonna need to be changed out soon. So basically, to meet the requirements of ADWR and ADQ, and to not get slapped with fines, we're gonna have to get that, those wells metered, then get a real report.
Which is to our benefit.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's why it's recorded by law.
We've known this for a long time. We've known this for a long time, this is not a new topic. And so what about asking WIFPA? Did you ever give anyone at WIFPA to see if we could use any of the remaining, uh, Big John well, well?
No, one, one things that, um, I wanted to do was approach WIFPA because we're not gonna use the, the rest of the money from the Big John well, because it's not gonna produce anything.
Right.
And the additional funds, I'm gonna see if they can be used for the well meters. We've not had dialogue yet, and for whatever reason, I, I don't know why, but they must have thought it was a long week to take off this week. So I'm waiting for, for calls to be returned.
We could hope at least for the Big John well site meter.
WIFPA is their own unique board, and we'll see what they can do. The other opportunity is with Bureau of Reclamation. Bureau of Reclamation has a water, um, conservation grant, and that one is usually once or twice a year, I think. One year they skip it, so the next year they did it twice in one year. That's for $100,000, and then you have to match up to $90,000. Now, that's for all mere replacements, so we go in and replace all the meters in the distribution system, we put in the, uh, the well meters, um, and they may even have a separate one just for the well meters. So we'll check on that, but we've done that at, um, well, two other locations, Yarnell and Mayor, we've used that grant and changed out all the meters, gone to the automatic read system. So those are some opportunities.
I think that would be, that could use some of those extra funds. Getting back to that, uh, overflowing tank, how long did it take you guys to get out there and address that after?
Well, we, we're not the operators.
Right.
Um, so as soon as Irene called on Saturday morning, I contacted, um, wet, they were not working in the, in the district, so they sent somebody over to shut it up. I don't know how long it took, he didn't get back to you.
Who, who wants it to actually went and shut it off?
I don't know.
Okay, so, um, some of the issue has been a lack of response by, uh, the former operations team.
What, what I found out is that in the short dealings we've had, they don't necessarily have coverage seven days a week.
Okay.
So every system should have somebody at least coming through, checking to make sure there aren't overflows, or, you know, whatever going on, um, at a minimum. So, because they typically don't do that on Saturday, it was, and I don't know who does it on Friday, because both Daniel and Joe are, are off, except Friday is their day off.
So that's not gonna be an issue with this new team, I'm confident.
You can ask them.
Okay. I asked you before, and so I'm.
So just back in the days of COVID, just so you know?
Yeah.
Four years, I had three days off.
Well, see me, if he needs any, uh, any medical care for stress or.
I'll show up. That's what I do.
And my understanding is that they also, I, I don't know if it's possible to check every meter in the district in one cycle, but they are going to look at all of the meters, because that hasn't been done in probably 25 years.
Yeah, so when they read the meters, the meter readers will read every meter in the system. So we'll have a good accountability, and I just had a nice education on that today, um, because we're going for billing tomorrow. And there were a whole bunch of meters that either had not been read for multiple weeks, or had been misread, um, multiple times, and we had a lot of questions on how to write those accounts. Um, so we weren't sending bills out for $96,800.
Is that, is that what the problem force was out there? Oh, I'm so sorry, as I know, blow you in the head.
Almost all been, uh.
Is it, um, because of poor meter readings?
It was, there's two factors, one is, they could have not read the meters for several weeks, or several months, I should say. Or they could have just misread them this most recent time.
So as the information was going in, that's why, what they did, so did the meters have to be rewritten?
They should be rewritten, but because we're going quickly, uh, we were running out of time to do that, so I just made adjustments.
Okay, thanks.
So basically, what I, what I did was I looked at what the typical usage is, did an average, and then took a look at the numbers to see what made sense, and then just basically said, okay, they probably transpose this four for a seven, or vice versa. So let's put it back to a four, and then it makes sense.
So as we also knew, that's been happening for a while.
There seems to be a, a lot of estimated meter reads up there.
And I, I think that's a great, um, example as why all of these changes can be made in the district.
I do have a question. So I know that one of the things I saw on the billing or on the meter re, um, report, one of them was couldn't read the meter, car has been parked over the meter for a period of time. And then another one was, um, dogs can't read meter. So my question is, in those situations, I mean, are, do we go to the door and ask them to move the car, do we contact them by phone? What do we do so that we're not going on a long period of time?
So what we would do, I'm not gonna say what was done in the past, but what we would do is ask people to move the car, and that can be done if you don't wanna go up to the door because you're afraid of a chihuahua or something, you can always make a phone call. Um, same thing with dogs in the yard, again, you don't have to go right up to the door, you can just call people or let them know, same thing with the vehicle parked on it, that's illegal. Um, that property is the property of the district, we're allowed to have access to it, um, at any reasonable time we want or need, and we can have emergency access at all time. So all we have to do is just give them a letter and say, move your car, we're gonna have to tow it because it's on our property. Um, we could write a police report, we have a couple different ways to take care of that.
Yeah, I just, I was asking so that we don't run into the same situation where it just goes on month after month. Perfect.
Nope, we have all kinds of opportunities for improvement.
Okay, we need to, one more.
Um, yes, so I read your additional information you sent us recently, and it all looks really good. Basically. Automating the system. And so that's, that's wonderful, and I'd like to say thank you for addressing the situation at the holding tank. I caught a little flack for not going in the right protocol or however, but I just wanted it to be looked at, you know?
The holding tank?
Yeah, the holding tank up on Wyatt.
Oh, the water tank.
The one, the water tank, yeah.
Thank you.
And so, you know, uh, but thank you on that, you know, because it sounds like you've got a good handle on it.
And if anything comes up, don't be afraid, I mean, Irene gave me a call, and it's something we gotta take care of, so. You got my phone number, just give a call.
That brings up another question, what about emergency numbers? Because the water district, I don't think you're gonna be going on Facebook, looking at all the different Facebook pages to see if customers are complaining. So who's getting, who, who will have the phone so that people can call the operations?
We'll work it out.
Okay.
We'll take a look at what there has been done in the past, is there a, is there a on-call phone that somebody took with them?
I think Bob had a phone that, that he gave the guys to use. But we also will need to change the number on the recording. Excuse me, we'll also have to change the number on the recording at the office.
Okay.
So that people know you're off.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get together and we'll figure out what the protocol is, because we wanna have, um, number one, if you don't get a response, you know, go to this one.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll have, trust me, we, we, we're gonna cover.
And if people have an issue, they can also go to the website page, and we got a message there. So, um, I think the point is, they can call, they can go to the website and, and use that, that posting things that need to be addressed by the district on Facebook and expecting somebody to respond to that is not acceptable.
That, that's not, and even the web page is, is not good.
Correct, right, I just wanna make sure that all the customers and everybody understand that.
Uh, we would like to update it on the website.
Yeah, and that's fine, it's just not the preferred, if it's an emergency.
Yeah.
If somebody does it on the website, it could be three days.
They have a phone number on the website, a phone number, a contact. So we're changing the contacts, we don't have contacts to Bob after.
We need to move on the, the phone, all of the contact information will be changed, one more, we need to move on.
Put an awful lot of agenda on here, and, you know.
One more, Tom, just three minutes.
I'm just wondering, who did we select for the arsenic?
Um, I don't recall the name of the company off the top of my head.
Was it Ad Edge?
No.
So it wasn't Ad Edge, it was?
No, Ad Edge was the only one.
Less.
Ad Edge was the only one who's been using the pass without getting quotes, and what I was able to find out is that they actually have somebody that's in, um, near Mayor, that actually does the work.
Right.
And so Ad Edge sits in their office and collects $8,000 more than this person.
Well, it was, yeah, it was like that much more, right, on the, on the quotes.
Yeah, the quote we originally got was over $66,000, and what we got for this person was $58,000.
Right, okay.
Okay, now we need to move on. Um, we're going to. Do you have anything else? That's it?
I'm good.
Okay, um, next is the financial report, Melina.
Okay, well. I didn't sign any checks this month, I didn't sign any checks last month. So I don't know who signed the checks, but it ain't me. In the arsenic sinking account, we had a balance of $130,871. We brought in $461 on interest to leave us with a balance of $131,332. Um, the BMO checking account, we started with ninety seven thousand six hundred and seventy three dollars. We had uh receipts in the amount of sixty eight thousand nine hundred and twenty six dollars. That left us with a balance of seventy three thousand three hundred and ten dollars. And also on this BMO checking account, there is um a charge for staples for five hundred and sixty four dollars and a charge for chaleens of sixty eight dollars. And I don't know that we ever approved that in the meeting. On the capital reserve account, we started with sixty four thousand two hundred dollars. We had receipts in the amount of sixteen thousand seven hundred and nine dollars. And no disbursement activity left us with eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Five. For cash in the bank general account, we started with fifty seven thousand four hundred ninety four dollars. We had three receipts for a total of sixty nine thousand three hundred and fifty nine dollars, which left us with ninety one thousand one hundred and sixty one dollars. And also on this one, there is a reimbursement for two hundred and four dollars. And I don't know what that was for. On a security funds account, there was no activity, fifty two thousand nine hundred and ninety, beginning and end, and that was it. So that got me thinking, why are there um charges on here that I don't think were ever ever authorized? And I I went back through the whole stack of them there and and I got a whole list of charges that I don't think were ever approved. So that's it for me.
Great, so if you have questions on any charges that haven't been approved, please take a copy and send them to um Natalie. And um regarding the staples for five hundred and seven hundred dollars, that was office supplies and the receipt was sent to Natalie. And the board does not have to vote and approve office supplies because that is just a routine expense that we're going to have every month. Instead of buying just one ink canister for one bill run, I I bought two because um nobody wants to go back and forth to staples too. Buy ink for the printer um once a month. And then I I bought a case of paper instead of um just a few other things. And regarding chaleens, um I have to do speak with Bill some time ago. And um the district has meetings and it is not uncommon that you take people that you're having your meeting with from other districts or whatever and you take them out to lunch. And so um just like the RC AC was here and they had the team all out all day um working for free. Um, I took them to lunch and and the district paid for it. So um those are all reasonable and acceptable charges. So nothing was, and and those are things that don't have to be approved. So if you do have anything um that you question, please send that list to Melina. And as always, I'm sorry, to Natalie. As always, you can go into the office anytime you want and look at invoices, checking account statements. You can ask Natalie for copies of the checking account statement. So you have access to any of the financial information you need.
Just a couple of cleanup comments for me. So what really governs is your procurement policy. So your procure, and so your procure policy may say you, every every expense needs to be approved for that book. That's possible.
We don't have one.
Right, and we've recommended that you adopt one just to make these things a lot easier.
And we will, we absolutely will, and we'll we'll start on the bylaws, but um let's do one thing at a time. We have a lot going on now and some of these things just aren't that high up. We developed a budget with office expenses and I've had conversations with Bill and it is, uh, we buy office supplies.
Sure, no, it makes complete sense logically, makes all sense in the world.
We're not gonna sit down at a board meeting once a month and vote on how much we're gonna ask.
He's a saver.
Yeah, that was fun.
We don't always know.
And then one more, one more comment for me, just as to potentially there are gift clause problems with paying, you know, taking people out to lunch and using district money.
Right.
And so we'd recommend that you uh look into that.
Look into for procurement?
Gift clause issues.
I've already asked Bill, so I suggest that you talk to Bill.
Well, and dwits typically aren't subject to the gift clause, so I want to be clear about that.
You what?
The dwits, domestic waste water or water improvement districts, aren't typically subject to the gift clause, but it's still best practice fiduciary.
And I agree, but then I suggest you have a conversation with Bill because I did that, addressed that with him. And and he said it was totally um acceptable. And because I didn't ask him about RC AC, so I would appreciate you getting with him before you suggest we do something that he's already given advice on that doesn't exactly.
Just for best practice, that's all.
I agree. I'm saying, I'm talking to Bill, please.
Will do.
Okay, did you have a question?
I was just going to ask Devin. Um, so when we start working on our bylaws, which we're planning to do, um, are we able to put in there a certain amount of money that is?
Under a hundred, under five hundred, whatever. That that's sort of the point I'm making is you can put in there whatever you want, but.
Because I mean we can't, you gotta keep the business going, office supplies and things like that, but you have to keep it going.
Makes sense.
We we've been seated for um eleven months. A lot of things have been out of order and we're having to work on a lot of things, but we can't do everything at once. So we would get to each item and in the timeframe that we can.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Good points.
So, Tom.
Um, can I know why Melina, the treasurer, didn't sign a check? Because she's primary.
There are five people who are approved to sign checks.
Okay.
And only two people are needed, so.
Right, but she's primary.
Then checks come in every first and you're gonna show up to the place and sign these checks because then need to be dispersed out to people.
Right, so she's a primary check signer. Why is that?
I was told not to sign checks without Natalie's approval. Okay, so I've been waiting for Natalie to call me to come sign checks and she doesn't call. Now, I don't know who's telling her not to call, but she doesn't call.
I just look like this. Someone, if they, I'll give you an example of how it's done, right? So this bill, there's a bill for a contractor that was here. It says whatever amount. Then the checks are signed by Natalie, they have a pile of them. I look at that check, I look at the amount. I'll give you an example. There was one from one of the companies that did not line up, that did not get signed. And it was brought up to Natalie that that was the wrong amount. All the other ones matched up directly. Three of us, one signed, maybe you signed, there's two spots for it. And then that can be sent out to that person so they can get paid on time. So without building up because before it was getting piled up. Now we're trying to stay on top of things.
I'm sorry, does the treasurer, are they required to sign or is it optional?
It depends what your policy says. If you have five authorized signers.
Primary, primary check signer.
Again, I haven't seen your policy. I don't know what it says.
We do have a policy, but I.
Yes, we do.
Tom, please.
Well, don't say things that aren't true.
But we're also authorized to sign these checks, Tom. It's not going to be specific. It's something that gets you. All it is is we're trying to sign these checks.
Is there a reason why, why she would?
There's no reason. Uh, is there a reason that you didn't go on Monday to sign the checks?
I never got a phone call to go sign the checks.
I never got a phone call either. I just showed up there and said, what checks do you have to sign?
Okay, hold it. We we, Tom, stop. Everybody, timeout. No. No.
She's bringing it over, so that's why she says.
Okay.
We need to stop.
So I look to your voices.
And take a breath. This is something that needs to be sought and discussed perhaps in the executive session, but it's not going to be solved here. I will look and see exactly what it says about the um treasurer's responsibility.
All the same procedures, man.
And honestly, we've been working on that. Um, so I do have, um Irene and I did sit down and spend quite a bit of time um developing board secretary and board treasurer role and responsibilities. We're gonna take two at a time to work through those, so we do have those tonight for people to look at. And um I will send Natalie an email and and ask um what what the reason is if she did say that you could not sign a check without her. I do know that when you, there was that time when you did not want to sign checks, she stated that. And you did not sign the Yavapai County Treasurer Statement to be a check signer. So I told Natalie that you you did not want to sign checks and perhaps it hasn't been, um, she hasn't been told that you did go ahead and sign that Yavapai County check signing document. So I will do that. Um, this is not the the time to have this discussion. Um, so we're going to move on. Are you done with the treasurer's report?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um, discussion and possible action, number two, operations, and three, general manager. We already did that. We did four. Oh, no, we have not. Item four, interview business, discussion and possible ratification regarding WET mutual cancellation agreement. I'll do that for Devin.
Sure, so just run through the background or?
Whatever you feel, yeah.
So again, we were in negotiations with WET on a contract renewal. Uh, we were in the process exchanging red lines back and forth, so we each give each other comments. My understanding is sort of out of the blue, we get a letter or some indication from WET saying they wanted to part ways mutually, amicably. Uh, the district promptly acted and prepared, instructed us to prepare an agreement to that effect. We did that. Uh, to Jerry's credit, it was signed without further comment from uh from Mr. Hannes Bob. And here we are to approve that, but it happened really quickly. Wasn't prompted by the district, to my knowledge.
No, it was not at all. As a matter of fact, Bob had reached out to me just to follow up on that. Um, and just said that he felt there was too much liability in the wording of the new agreement that was being proposed and that he wanted just mutually leave. Right, so I brought that to Elaine and Devin and everybody seemed to to understand and put together an agreement for mutual separation and Bob looked it over and signed it and said he was happy, so.
And given the timing happened between board meetings, we're scheduled for the next board meeting to get ratified. If time had permitted, we would have just had to approve that board meeting, but it all happened in, I think, under a week. I mean, it was it was quick, so from drafting to signature, it's almost unheard of to get a contract done that quick. So um we were just as surprised that it happened.
May I ask?
Sure.
Um, it would have been well for us to actually approve the contract?
I believe that that's what we're here to do today, is approve contracts.
I mean, it was signed before it was approved.
Yes.
But ideally, it would be approved first, but.
Yeah, best practice, time permitting.
Yes, but it was okay.
Tom, excuse me. Tom.
Yes.
Please do not speak until he has completed his answer.
I think you will.
Please.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Please.
Yes, is the short answer. Best practice, time we're permitting. It would have been on a board meeting, discussion of possible approval of WET mutual cancellation contract. Instead, you see discussion of possible ratification. So again, all unfolded very quickly. We're just ratifying the decision that was already made.
I see. You know, wanting to understand.
Yep.
How things are proper.
Of course.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
So if our contractor quits, what if we don't accept it?
If if WET quit?
Hmm?
Well, the contract, you, they quit and you didn't want them to, you could sue them. The contract was very clear on this. It had to be mutual. And so that was, you know, part of the reason we were entering into such um negotiating to the extent we were is because we needed mutual consent to get out of it. It wasn't working out. Bob came to Jerry and said, let's just part ways amicably and here we are today.
So the other option would have been we could sue them.
Yeah, 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 he breached his contract and just walked away.
Fortunately, that one went smoothly. Didn't cost us a boatload.
Right, and again, Jerry, I think, made great points. Derek and I worked together on some other projects. I've been consistently impressed with his professionalism. I think you're in good hands.
Very good. Excellent.
So um we just, someone just makes a motion to um
Yes.
Accept WET's separate, mutual cancellation agreement?
Yeah, so I think the the motion should state, the minute should reflect that uh you're ratifying the instructions to leave council, negotiation and execution of the WET mutual cancellation agreement. And then the board's approving the contract. That's right, and so.
I so move?
Second argument.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously on the board on the freeze to accept the mutual cancellation of the agreement. So five, discussion and possible action regarding hiring administrative support for minute transcription and office backup. This is not going to be something I think that we're going to be able to discuss and vote on today because it's a kind of a more complicated question. But we we need to aggressively start looking for someone um with certain qualifications that we have to discuss and and determine what that would be to back up Julie, just in case something happens. For example, when her husband was permanently ill and in his passing and the office was closed for several days. Um, the other thing is, I don't think that Irene should be doing all of the meeting minutes in addition to everything else she's doing and not getting paid. So the question would be, do we want to hire somebody hourly to help Julie and do the meeting minutes? Or should we keep the meeting minutes, um, the pay for the meeting minutes the same as what we voted for? Irene, so any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I personally, I think she'd be separate because what if it's not her doing the office, is it reset?
I'm sorry, what?
So you can get paid, paid for the meeting minutes, but are you, is she gonna be?
She can't. That's why we need to find someone else.
As a competitive bid.
Why?
If if you went out to bid, you selected her bid, you could pay her, but you just can't decide to pay her.
So if we were to go out to bid?
Yes.
Then we could just go out and pay Irene?
Yes, if you did competitive procurement, that's good.
Even on a board member?
Correct, yes, yeah.
Because it's a separate role, a different cap?
No, no, it's because they went to bid. So, you know, you you did your due diligence, you went out, you got quotes from other people who offered those services and your rates were competitive and you, for consistency and, you know, your knowledge of the district, the district chose you. I think that would be an appropriate uh process, but you you would have to be.
So in doing a bid, where does it have to be posted?
You know, essentially your standard process. I mean, the reason people avoid it is it's expensive for something that, you know, you're paying, I don't know what your truck, a hundred bucks an hour. Uh, but you'd post on the district website, you'd advertise it in the newspaper.
You'd have to advertise it in the newspaper?
Yeah, sealed, competitive sealed bidding, usually you're advertising newspaper and and all, the whole nine.
You know, that might be too much though, really. She already does so much that it hurts her. I think that's something that she's gonna have to consider and and see if she's even open to it. But um if she's not, we need plan B, which would be, do we want to pay someone to be trained for office backup and to do the meeting minutes hourly or?
Yes.
So if we're willing to pay somebody, aren't there um AI transcription where but that there's a fee for those, right? But they would they would record the meeting and transcribe the text. Is that correct?
Yeah, Microsoft Teams has a built-in, it it joins the call when you join the call. It's called read.me and it transcribes it, records the meeting, sends out a little summary. It's it's not easy to pay for it, but.
Bill W tried one here.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, so I'm not sure how that ended up working out actually, but.
That didn't not transcribe. So item six is the purchase of a recording device for board meetings. I tried the owl and I was actually able to download a, or to have it um transcribe a a video from a meeting. It stopped at a point, at some point in the meeting, I don't know if it's, if it was too much because it was an hour and a half, but it did a great job of transcribing the entire meeting that was recorded. but it did a great job of transcribing the entire meeting that was recorded. And then I could go to another AI and have it shorten it and, and create a summary of the meeting minutes, which was good. And then Natalie sent me what they use, and I have it, and they do the Teams thing, and it's.
It's, it's nifty.
It is.
It does a good job, I'd say.
It saves a lot of time.
Yeah, saves a lot of time, and I think it's pretty accurate, actually.
Nifty is a great word.
Yeah.
Now, the Owl, depending on the, um, the features that you want to get, it, it was like twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I think that was a pricier one, so I think there's, are some that are not as expensive. So we just kinda need to look at that, and then we need to come back and really discuss doing that, because I think that would be a wise move instead of
That's right.
having to find somebody to transcribe meeting minutes. And so then the other part goes to finding someone to help back up Julie. And I think the question on that would be, could we offer like fifteen hours a week doing things in the office? I know when we get moved, there's gonna be a lot to do in the moving. Would it be beneficial to have another office person doing fifteen hours a week to help support the new operations and all of the changes that will be taking place with that?
I think once we dig into what we, what's needed and what's being used or not used, probably would not be a bad idea to have somebody either on the call or under contract to say, okay, can you come in and work these hours? As far as a face in the office, or on the phone and, you know, for paying bills, I just don't see how you cannot go without a, a person in the office for a week, or, you know.
I know, that's, um, that's been really challenging, but because we've had such a difficult time with Lisa Chandler's separation agreement, we could not advertise to hire anyone, and so that was just a total faux pas as far as I'm concerned. And so the only option we had was with Julie, because we couldn't run it that, but now we can utilize options.
So Jerry, is, are you suggesting that we get a handle on what all Julie does, or what that position needs to do in order to support the district? Before we start looking for somebody to come in? Or are you suggesting that we have somebody be a face and we deal with all the rest of it as we go?
I think it would be, just from my opinion, it'd be good to have somebody as a quick fill-in, but we really need to know what the skill sets are needed for that. I mean, basically, you have to do all the Excel stuff for the backflow prevention program that we've been working on. So there's so, certain skill sets that people are gonna need to just do rudimentary office stuff. And as we keep getting into higher and higher technology levels, for meter reading, for GPS coordinates, for everything else, we need to make sure that a person in the office has those skill sets, that they can adapt and learn that kind of stuff. We know that there are training programs out there. As a matter of fact, we're bringing Badger in to mayor again to retrain people, but it's not cheap. So you've gotta have somebody that is willing to take the training, understand it, you know, basically use it, because this training is two thousand dollars. And that's a, basically a one-day training, six hours.
And we paid twelve hundred to enhance to train. I think we could have trained up to five people, three people took the training. And Enhance had never been in the train anyway. I think maybe they trained, I don't know if they trained Lisa or not. So we really need to get a better grip on the details that go with entering meter readings, because that's not been, that's not been done appropriately probably since, since this board took over and meeting to really address those issues. So maybe, you have any thoughts on what an hourly rate for a backup office person would be? Do you pay them more or, or less, since they get fewer hours, I don't, I don't know?
Just in the sense, you're giving, you're paying her for hours, not the, I mean, some people need temporary things, some people could have another job and they just want a couple extra hours.
Like not fully qualified, right? I mean, just kinda to get the job done bare bones, or, you know.
So maybe even I should sit down and talk about what a reasonable rate of pay would be, and we can check some sites to see what the average hourly rate is for an office clerk, position like that. But if you look at somebody who's really good with computer, you actually may need to pay them more than what the clerk is being paid now, because they're coming in with better skills. And if that's the case, they should be paid more than the person that is there with the
That's a good point.
with the lesser skill. And to get someone to stay in any small area, I think you might agree with this, is you need to pay them, you need to be fair in the pay, or they're not going to stay.
Yeah, and it's a combination of what skill set do they have coming into the position, and then what skill set they establish through all the training and stuff, and then maybe you start out at twenty bucks an hour, but as they grow and become more valuable, it's maybe twenty-five to thirty bucks an hour, I don't know.
And if that causes any, if paying a new person more than you're paying the existing person causes any angst for the existing person, well, so be it. We're paying for a skill set, and a skill set that they might not have at present, correct?
Could I just make one observation? So to the AI thing, I think that's a great idea. We use Plaid at one of the communities I worked at, and it's only about five hundred bucks. And the person that does it wrote up a program for it. Our clerk uses it, and she went from eight hours to transcribe all the meeting minutes to less than two hours. And I just sent you a, a sample of what, what it does.
Thank you.
Cause it, it even gives like the names.
This is something we've talked about for a long time, but we have been so busy with so many other things that I think we need to kind of put this back up on the list where it belongs, now that we're getting a lot of the other stuff taken care of. So.
Are we going to defer?
You and I will.
We're gonna defer five and six for future meeting then?
Is that due now?
You and I, we, we're not gonna, we, we're having a discussion, we're not gonna go on anything. And then we will get together and talk about what a reasonable rate would be, qualifications, where we want to advertise. And anybody can look at these recording devices for meetings, I've checked out a couple. I have recommendations from Natalie, and so we can look at those. Uh, discussion and possible action regarding roles and responsibilities of board members. We've been talking about doing this for some time, another one of those things that's moving up on the list. I think we're gonna do two roles at a time, so that we don't overwhelm ourselves, and we wanna keep apples with apples and oranges with oranges, we don't want fruit salad. Every role has distinct responsibilities, because each role is different, and each role we screen is a, a set of
Assets.
Assets. And it's so that we have branches to the tree. And, and the branches are important, because that helps keep things in balance. We can't have the same one or two people doing all of the work, that's, that's just too much. So we each need to be able to fulfill our roles and contribute to the team and to the board as a whole. Irene and I got together and we came up with some, this is just an outline, this is just a template. It, it doesn't mean that this is what it needs to look like. These are possibilities of what the secretary's role should consist of. Some of it was taken from, you already have it, from the description of the website, on the old website, which is antiquated.
Some came from Jerry, you had provided this information.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he did. And here's for the treasurer. And this was the same. So we need to look at that, and look at everything, and consider the importance of each of the roles so that things are distributed a little more evenly as far as board tasks. So I would like everyone to look at these. You can make comments on the paper, make comments on a separate piece of paper. We're gonna have to have another meeting so we can get together and discuss this until we come up with, you know, something that we can all agree on. And then these will go in the bylaws. Then we're gonna start looking at the bylaws and looking at a section at a time, not the whole thing, that would be overwhelming. And so we're gonna work on sections of the bylaw, one at a time, until we get through and complete them, because when we talk about all of the things that we should have in the bylaws, like how much we can spend, it's like, my, my head explodes, because it's just so much.
It's a lot.
And this district has never had it. And we are putting so much together right now, that when you mention that, and I think about the amount of work that's gonna require, and my head wants to explode. We have to take it in the pieces we can manage.
Makes sense.
Okay. That's why we have legal counsel at every meeting. We're, we're not intentionally trying to break any laws or violate any statutes.
That's good, I'm about to hear.
We're, we're trying to survive and do the best we can in cleaning up a mess and making it what it should be. Okay. So now, we got to that, now we're on eight, uh, discussion, Tom?
Was this discussable here, I thought it was? I'm just curious, how long have you had this, um, this outline here?
Excuse me, Tom, I'll, we state that again. Irene and I just got together recently.
Recently.
And Jerry provided some information, and she and I sat down and just, this is what we came up with as a starting point, that's all it is, is a starting point.
Right.
We did use, I'm sorry.
Yes.
We did use, um, the computer, you know, to get some ideas on other rural water districts, and, you know, what's expected. Really, it's just, it's for us to go over and look at it and see if it outlines responsibilities it's gonna be for each one of us, because clarity, there hasn't been a lot of clarity around it.
Right, well, we had our policy and procedures, and that's what, when I ran for a position on the board, that's what I was getting for.
Yep.
This is gonna be way beyond that. From what I can just see right here, I would be curious as to, we start with secretary, treasurer.
Again, Tom, excuse me, Tom. This.
I can't speak.
This, you're, you're getting ahead of things, this is simply an outline, this is not written in stone.
I don't know, just.
Please go through it, we'll make your comments.
Okay, I just totally realized we're volunteers here, we're not.
And then we're gonna meet again, and, and we'll discuss what you agree with and what you don't agree with.
Right.
That's all it is, but we need, need to move on to eight, it's six o'clock. And we need to have the discussion of possible action regarding adjournment into an executive session with legal counsel pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point oh three A three for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding social media posting, board etiquette, decorum, and potential development of policies for such items. So I would like to entertain a motion that we go into that executive session.
I'll, I'll motion that we proceed into executive session for ARS thirty-eight point three one point oh three A three.
And for purposes just to add to that for the minutes of discussing items eight, nine, and ten.
Okay.
That's the budget, and that's the interim account fund transfers.
Okay.
Since that's what the social posts are about.
Right. And.
I will second it.
He seconded it, all in favor, favor of adjourning into the executive session, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Tom?
Aye.
Okay, vote passes unanimously, so we're gonna have to ask, I know you guys are gonna be brokenhearted that you are getting kicked out, but we're so excited to have you on board.
You want us to stay?
And we're taking a, a five-minute break to use the restroom. Okay. Hopefully this won't take forever, we'll try and make it.
Are you gonna call the meeting back to order that after executive session?
I'm sorry, what?
Is it gonna come back after?
Yes. That's why it's great to be able to have a meeting room of our own, is so that if we don't violate the livery policy of having to leave at like six forty-five, it would save so much by having a private office. I appreciate the advice.
Okay, we're rolling.
But there are some things I, I'm just not sure are.
Of course, we're in public now, this is public.
Rolling.
Okay.
So.
Uh, what?
Yeah?
Just adjourned?
Well, we're, we're now in public session.
So we are in a public session, it is.
I can maybe make a statement, given time constraints, you've decided we're going for an adjournment.
Okay, given, we have the public discussion during the course of the meeting, but because it is seven oh five, we are going to adjourn the meeting right now, so the meeting is now adjourned. We good?
That's good.
You don't have to vote.
Yes.